Good morning, folks. We'll begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's one more chair, ladies, if you'd like. All right, on the agenda, the first thing on the agenda is the public hearing for a liquor license in Coburg. An estate notice is hereby given by the Franklin County Commissioners. We'll hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 3, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. at 140 Main Street, Farmington, Maine, for the purpose of receiving public comments on the consideration of authorizing liquor sales in the unorganized territory of Coburg, pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 122 of Title 28A of the main revised statute. The Commissioners are considering authorizing the following. It's quite a list. Sale of liquor for consumption on the premises on days other than Sunday. Sale of spirits in fortified wine, whatever that means, for consumption of... off the premises on days other than Sunday. Sale of malt liquor and wine for consumption off the premises on days other than Sunday. Sale of liquor for consumption on the premises on Sundays. Sale of spirits in fortified wine for consumption off the premises on Sundays. Sale of malt liquor and wine for consumption off the premises on Sundays. Sale of spirits to be consumed on the premises on Sunday. Sale of malt liquor and wine to be consumed on the premises on Sunday. Sale of malt liquor and wine for consumption... there's a duplicate, on the premises on Sunday. Operation of bottle clubs. Any comment? Nobody's opposed to them being drunk before they cross the border?
Nope. Not in favor, not opposed, no comments?
Well, they'll go across the border happy.
This is just a housekeeping item for the state. Evidently, they misplaced the original vote. It was publicated years ago.
So it's a store up there, right?
I have not been to Coburg to buy liquor, so I do not know. I'm assuming there is one operational up there.
So, already? This drinking on premises and all that, I didn't realize they had a beer power or...
No, this doesn't mean that's already operating. This just authorizes all of the approved uses that the state can license you for. So, going forward, if somebody wants to do that, they have the ability to do that, according to the state. They still have to go through the licensing process with the state. This is just authorizing these as possible ways that liquor can be sold and consumed. And we did this previously, if you remember, Clyde, a year and a half, two years ago, for the rest of the unorganized territories, because they couldn't find any paperwork where the Commissioners had acted on that. They thought they were good with Coburg, and then they called me back three months ago and said, "Can't find the Coburg rule, but you're gonna have to..."
Oh, I see what... Okay, now, that answers my question.
Yeah, now we're just getting the paperwork that they need.
I make a motion that we approve this license in Coburg.
Correct.
My second, any discussion? So, you're not all in favor of that motion?
Should explain later, there you go.
Okay. I just had to have it explained to me a little bit, that's all. Okay? Item number two is the Catholic Charities Refugee Settlement.
Great, so that's us?
Set my sails.
Yeah, okay, good. My name is Steve Laterno. I'm the CEO of Catholic Charities Maine. I've worked with Catholic Charities for 23 years and in the role of CEO for 13. Hannah DeAngelis is our program director for the refugee program. And really, just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to be on the agenda to... Oh, we're really here to provide an opportunity for questions that you may have, but also to provide some educational material on the refugee program as a whole, because we believe, one, it's our role to do that, and then, two, there's a lot of misinformation about the refugee program. There's a lot of confusion, especially with the asylum seeker situation that took place in Portland last summer. Both situations are completely different. The refugee resettlement program's been around for 40 or 50 years. And so, just briefly about Catholic Charities. We're a statewide organization. We have 25 programs that we do statewide. The refugee program is just one of those. We served over 51,000 people last year statewide. About 400, 500 were from the refugee program. So, it's a very small component of our organization, but a very important one, as it's very rooted in our Catholic social kitchen. People ask me all the time, "Why is Catholic Charities providing refugee resettlement?" And well, it goes back 2,000 years to our founding in the Gospel of Matthew to welcome the immigrant. And so, when the federal government participates in the refugee program, which they do through the United Nations 50 years ago, Catholic Charities felt like they needed to be a presence in the communities where the refugees were coming to welcome them and to really set them up for success. That's our role, is to help set refugees up for success when they come here. We don't do that in isolation. We never would. I would never be a part of an organization to resettle a refugee in a community that I thought they were set up to fail. I wouldn't do it. I think it would be unfair to the community and unfair to the refugees. So, for 50 years, we've participated in this program very successfully. It changes every decade. Really, in the '70s, it was mostly Cambodians and Vietnamese coming to America and to Maine, who today, now, run in very successful businesses. And then, in the '80s, it was more the Eastern Bloc European countries. And so, through those changes, we've also changed the model. Back in the '70s, there were host families through parishes. Most refugee resettlement organizations in the country don't do the host family anymore with refugees. We found working with the communities and creating partnerships with community and other nonprofits has really been the most successful effort to integrate refugees into the community. We've had great success. And so, the reason why we're in Farmington at Franklin County is we had the request... We've been getting requests from different people all over the state since an executive order was issued on refugee resettlement, and now it's under an injunction. And Hannah can get into more of the particulars. And what we're here to do is really to just provide education so that county Commissioners and community people know what the refugee program is and what it isn't, because there is a lot of confusion. People think that the 300, 400, 500 people that came in this summer through the asylum seeker process were refugees, and they're not. They're not deemed refugees. They're not allowed to work. They don't have refugee status. They could at some point, once they go back to court. This refugee program that we're here to talk about, and Hannah will get into more details about, is a organized refugee resettlement process in conjunction and in collaboration with the federal government. We actually have a contract with the federal government to provide this service. And it has made some changes in the last four or five years. We used to resettle 600 refugees a year to 400, 500, 600, primarily in Cumberland, Kennebec, and Andruscoggin County. In the last three years, it's gone down to as low as about 100 refugees, give or take. And so, we're really focused in the Cumberland County area. That's where our capacity is. That's where we built a lot of partnerships to help these people get their feet on the ground. And the schools are adapted to it. There is absolutely no plan today, or even in the foreseeable future, to expand the refugee program into Franklin County. The reason why we're here really is at the invitation of some community members that were interested in us at least providing the education information and then giving you the chance to answer some questions. I would like a few more minutes to allow Hannah to kind of really go through the process, if that's okay, about refugee resettlement, just so that's documented and people understand, and if there are other questions. But I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you.
Awesome, thanks, Steve. So, I'm Hannah DeAngelis, the director of the program. I'm from Reece Field, about 30 minutes away. I feel really excited to actually be doing my job in Farmington. That's exciting for me. Let's be right in my backyard. And so, refugee is actually a legal status. So, immigrant is the umbrella. Refugee is one category underneath. Asylum seeker is a different one. And that's pretty important for the news we've been hearing this summer. It's someone who's unable to return to their country of origin because of a well-founded fear of persecution. A big part of getting the status is you have to prove that you're fleeing for your life. And a refugee has to do that outside of the United States. It's a really big part of how the process works. And so, if a refugee flees their country, they go to a neighboring country in that country. They go through interviews with the United Nations to prove that they are fleeing for their life. Then, most folks are in a refugee camp. For right now, it's over two decades, is the average amount of time in a refugee camp. And during that time, they're going through screening processes by the federal United States government. It's the Department of Homeland Security and the FBI. So, it's things like fingerprinting, interviews with family members, fact-checking someone's story against the historical events of the time, what wars are going on. So, it's a very rigorous process. There's a lot of health screening also. So, only about 1% of people from those camps are selected for resettlement anywhere. This year, only 18,000 people will come to the entire United States from that process. And we expect about 100 of those people to come to Maine. And that's the entire state of Maine. So, we've only seen 22 people so far since October first, when our year starts. And all of those people spent many, many years going through that screening process. What's very confusing, and this still is hard for me to this day, is that asylum seekers are also people fleeing for their lives, but it's a very different process that we don't have control over or a part in. And all of the news over the summer, those folks were seeking asylum, and they interviewed the states through a different process. Refugees go through that overseas process. We get a notice about two weeks before they come from the State Department that says a family of five is coming at this time at Portland Jetport. Our staff, we go pick them up at the airport. And we're fully responsible for immediate housing, food, clothing, and then supporting people with things like getting a social security card, enrollment in school, going to the doctor, everything you need to restart your life. That's our job, fully our job, intensively for 90 days. And then, we have another five years even to support folks through, I have long-term integration, like English language learning and getting a job, things like that. Like Steve said, our program has shifted a lot over the last few years. So, it's only about 100 people now instead of 600. We have 14 staff members, and 11 of them are in Cumberland County, and we have three in Lewiston and Andruscoggin. And that's really our net of services. Right now, we will occasionally resettle a family in Augusta if they have a family member there, or maybe Beaufort for the same reason, if there's a family member there. All of our money is federal, so we get reimbursed from the federal government after somebody arrives to provide those services, make sure they're housed, that they're going to school. That's part of our contract. This executive order is bringing a lot of attention to the program because the federal government had asked for every individual state and county to give active consent to resettle refugees in those locations. So, we started that process. We focused first on Cumberland, because it's our big resettlement site. But then, partway through that process, an injunction was placed against the executive order, so it's not active right now, which is why we're pausing on actively attaining consent, but we're really dedicated to the education piece, because we know it gave... It really spread the news, spread throughout the state. So, we've supported education in Penobscot, Hancock Counties as well. And we're happy to travel and keep doing that. So, right now, again, we'll look at Andruscoggin maybe next for consent, but we have no plans to resettle folks here. We're really making choices about resettlement based on resources and things like schools, where family members already are, maybe where there are interpreters so that there's languages available to support people. And we already have other locations in Maine where we've really built up support for those services.
And we do recognize that there are some areas of the state that are better equipped and have more resources available, but also, I'm actually getting other areas of the state telling me they really want us to do refugee resettlement there. A couple of years ago, that was very clear in Bangor. So, it really depends. And if there was an area that really was saying, "We can't do it, we don't have the capacity", I mean, it would be unfair to the community and to the refugees to push that issue. So, I think the benefit of having the opportunity to do this and to have this dialogue is to, one, clarify what refugee resettlement really is and what it isn't. And I think that's where most... Look, I've been in this role for 13 years. It's taken me... When I started as CEO, I was in children's welfare programs. I didn't know anything about refugee resettlement. So, it's a very confusing program, and a lot of rules and regulations and things like that. That's why we have our expert Hannah. But I think it's great to have that opportunity. And once we had that opportunity to talk to folks, it does change people's minds about the refugee resettlement program, because I will say this. Refugees that come here are really set up to succeed. They come with at least 90 days of some support from the federal government, and their kids go to school. But they can work, and they want to work. Where in asylum seeker, you can't. They can't work. They're not allowed to work. So, they're really deemed to set up really more for failure in that end, in the community, because now the community really does have to do more of the support. But with the refugee program, and I think Portland over the years, Bangor sees it, that workforce shortages across our state, businesses can't find enough people to work. The refugee program provides a legal seamless process. There are some challenges. English, learning English as a second language is one of the first things we do, because, you know, we're not helping them or the job that they're going into if they can't speak English. So, those are the types of things that we focus on. But there is clearly a workforce shortage, and so, people are recognizing the refugee program as one facet of bringing more workforce to Maine.
I don't think there's a workforce shortage. I think there's a shortage of people that want to work. I think you get that wrong. I've always thought that, because the programs are so good in the state of Maine.
What programs?
All kinds of programs that promotes people that just want to sit back at home and do whatever. Okay, thank you. And I think we need to make sure that we... When I made that comment about aliens, about refugees, I mean illegal refugees, not the ones that come through the...
So, in illegal, I'm not sure those two words would go together.
Okay.
All right? So, you could have an immigrant that's here illegally, you know, that doesn't have the documentation, came through a border or whatnot, without crossing a port of entry. Refugees, just to go back to our original presentation, are here at the invitation of the federal government. They're here legally. Refugees are here legally. They have refugee status. The federal government, even under President Trump, recognized them as legal residents of the country.
How many countries do that?
Many.
Any of them?
Yeah, a lot of them.
And to go back to the whole refugee resettlement process, most countries in the United Nations, they have the capacity to it. So, obviously, the United States does more than a lot of other countries, but most developed countries do provide it. Every state has always been required to have a refugee program. Every state. And so, Catholic Charities, that's one of the other myths. Catholic Charities is doing this and bringing them here. No, we're here because if we weren't here, somebody else is doing it. The state of Maine did it for a while. And they recognized it was better in the hands of an organization that had a stronger network and partnerships that could leverage all those partnerships in churches and parishes and people that see this as core to their mission, to them as people, you know, as welcoming people and setting them up.
So, are you in all 50 states?
Not Catholic Charities, no.
Okay.
No. No, the refugee program in different states is run by, sometimes, the state, does it? In some cases, the Lutheran services, I don't know.
Jewish vocational services, international release services. A lot of them are faith-based in different states.
Yeah, there's probably, I would say, there's 12, maybe Catholic Charities different. But we're not affiliated with them. We're completely separate entities.
There's a movie about this, an old movie that I used to watch on Saturday mornings. What is it called? Black Robe or something like that. And it's about the Catholic up in Canada, back when the United States and Canada were battling for the border. And it's a bloody movie.
No.
It's not a pleasant... But my question is, why is the federal government selecting a church when we're supposed to keep church and government separate?
Well, I can answer that one. So, first of all, we have all kinds of contracts with the state and the federal government. And I get that question all the time. I ask that question. I'm a lifelong Catholic. When I came to Catholic Charities, most of the programs we provided were programs that other nonprofits did. So, the federal government's going to always do what, in contract with an organization that provides the best opportunity to successfully administer the contract that they have. And so, just like a Bath Iron Works or anybody else that contracts with the federal government, they compete. We have to compete for all these contracts. And we put together a proposal, and I'm not going to apologize for... We usually put together a very good proposal that ends up being the most competitive, least cost, best quality. And we've got some proven success and outcomes. So, that's kind of why. The other misnomer is that we're doing this to proselytize and convert everybody to Catholicism. That's not the case. Matter of fact, most of our employees are not Catholic. It follows kind of the same demographic line. The only evangelizing we do is the service that our staff provide in a loving compassionate way to the clients that we serve. And that's across all the programs. So, it's a food program that we have up north that feeds 20,000 people. We provide food to people that are hungry. We provide case management. We provide counseling to people that are facing addictions. Well, the refugee program, we provide support to help them succeed. And that's why the federal government, through all the administrations, including the current one, contracts with, whether it's Galageries or some of the other organizations. So, hopefully, that answers that.
So, our own government is ignoring that?
Well, I don't think it's separating...
Catholic charities versus government.
But it's not, we're not, they're not contracting with a church. They're contracting with a nonprofit that has Catholic charities in the name. We have some values that are consistent with the church, but our job through the federal government is not to proselytize. So, there is a separation now. It's to provide a service, case management, these types of services that aren't... There is a separation.
Good, thank you. I appreciate you coming in and explaining this program to me. When it was thrown at me last meeting, it wasn't what I thought it was, okay? I was thinking, "What's happening in Portland and...
There's not a law.
And thank you, Vern, for your efforts in getting these people here to explain this program to us. The telephone call that I've got is, they're confused also. They were thinking on the same basis as I was, okay? And this lady right here got awful upset with me last time, I know, when we left, because I was so against this refugee program. As I was reading this letter that you give us, we have no alternative but say yes to the program, because it's funded by the federal government, and the federal government tells us, "We're gonna have it." So, who are we to say no to it, okay? And what bothers me is I've got so many people out there in my district, especially District 3, but I know District 2 and 1 has it also. There is people that need help, okay? And what I was afraid of, if we had these people come in, these people are gonna be put back on the back burner again. And I don't want that. I fight for that. And where the Commissioners, not all, against federal help. East Wilton, where they can get help. The transportation program. I feel that that's hurting my people also. And they're putting more people in here that need these services that we aren't providing, okay? And this is what puzzles me all down the road. And like I say, I appreciate you coming in and explaining this program to me. And I don't know how Terry feels, but reading this, I feel that we had no choice to accept your program.
So, I appreciate that, and I appreciate that, you know, the Commissioners have invited and listened to Catholic Charities on what the program is. I would propose that there is a choice, but I also would think that we would want to, understanding what the program is, that the refugees are set up for success, and they will be coming here, and as I said, they work towards, you know, they want to work. They want to contribute to the community. And I think, you know, they could speak even further to, you know, the value of adding towards the tax base, not taking away from the tax base. So, it's not whether we have a choice. It's whether or not we would... I would ask that we consider, in the future, that we consider that, you know, if refugees were to be resettled here, that we would consider doing so and open our arms to looking at new people coming in that are willing to work. I know Commissioner Brand said, you know, he has an opinion on whether or not people are willing to work that are here locally. But we've heard that refugees are looking to work. They are looking to be part of the workforce. So, I would encourage that, you know, we consider, instead of looking at it as we have no choice, but we open it up to dialogue and discussion for embracing this.
I go back to the, a few years ago, is the Decartes had these people come in to work because he couldn't get local people to work, and they had others. Apple Orchards hired them. They had to come for so long with a green card or something, and then they had to go back.
And if I could just explain, and those aren't even refugees. Those are migrant workers that are here on a visa, and they're required to leave at a certain time.
But these people are about the same, on the same course.
But they're immigrants.
The same thing, they want to work. And these people want to work. When I went on a cruise, I've been on three cruises, they had foreign people working on those cruises. And they were very efficient and very nice. So, I've got to change my attitude on this, and I apologize to you, but I didn't have the information that I wanted, okay? And before I could make a decision on anything, I have to have the information.
Thank you.
Okay? And I'm sorry that you got a little upset with me, but I don't blame you. I don't blame you. But I have the program, and I'm sorry, but I'm gonna go with the program because on account of this, refugees come into the United States. And you read that right there, and it tells you, "We welcome." I don't think it makes a difference, after listening to you folks, whether we support it or not in Franklin County. It looks pretty clear to me that you're settled in Cumberland County. You're a...
Yeah, just an example, Penobscot County Commissioners had some concerns, I don't know if you read about it. They got the information that we provided. They voted in for us to support it. Knowing full well, we're very clear with them, you know, this year, it's not gonna happen. We just don't have... But Bangor, you know, I want to be very straightforward. Bangor would probably be more likely to be a location because we've got to be in a location where there's the capacity underneath to absorb the initial. And then, so, that's why Portland's always worked and Lewiston. But I do think it speaks volumes to have... I think if the community members, I think it speaks volumes if Commissioners at least say, "We welcome and support the program," even if you know it's not gonna happen, because... even if you know it's not going to happen because I think it says a lot about our community too.
Right. It's for future. It's future. That's what you're talking about, in the future.
Yeah, I'm not a resident of Franklin County, but I just want, we do have volunteers and staff that live in here. Because we provide homemaker services in this area. We do a lot of services in this area. And so it would, I just appreciate the opportunity to speak. And Mr. Barker, your, your experience is not, is very common. I think your willingness to admit, apologize publicly like you did is, is, doesn't always happen. And so I'm very impressed with that. I appreciate that.
And I'm sorry that I, but like I say, I have to have my information.
Any other comments?
This man right here is the one that brought you in.
Okay, good.
Another comment to your point about the legality, asylum seekers are also here legally. They have been given permission by our government to be here while they pursue their cases. So they, they're not here illegally either. They're at a different stage in proving their case about their.
The unfortunate thing for them is they're federally not allowed to work.
They're not allowed to work, right, yes. They're not under the situation, but they are also here legally. While, when they've been given permission to be here while they pursue their case because it has been established that they have a credible fear of returning.
All right, and Clyde, you can take all the, you can take all the trip you'd like now. You'll probably get a discount.
Yeah, you're right.
Just to clarify, with a welcoming community, you're not looking to bring tons of people in, not even tens of people. It would just be, you know, one or two here or there that had either family support, a connection, or some type of local support, and you would still be providing that support for them.
Absolutely. And this year will be about 100 people. And about 70% of our cases are family ties. That was referenced in our letter. So we resettle people where their families are, which right now is really Andruscog and Cumberland heavy. Occasionally York or kind of a.
But it's all over the state.
The other thing that, the other thing that wasn't said, I think is important, especially for military families like myself, my, my family. The other refugees besides family ties could be special cases. And there would be people that actually helped our military in some of the conflicts. And if they stay in Iraq or Afghanistan, them and their family, that's it. They helped us. So I think that's important to also stipulate that these people put their lives in danger to help, to help our military.
As a wife of a veteran, I appreciate. Sounds like you do wonderful.
Great, so thank you.
As someone who just dropped in today, I keep thinking about my grandparents who were asylum seekers from Eastern Europe. Most of my family was destroyed during the pogroms in Russia. And the rest of them were killed by the Germans. They were asylum seekers. They weren't called refugees. And they made their way and God helped them. Here I am.
Nice.
Absolutely.
Yes?
So if I may suggest, you know, make a recommendation to commissioners, they respectfully would consider making some positive motion or affirmation. I, I would appreciate that.
Do what now?
Make a motion that, last time.
We're not going to make a decision today on any of this. We'll wait until next week or the week after. So today is not the proper time because we don't have a full board. So we're not going.
But you know how I'm going to go.
Yeah, I, I wasn't suggesting today, I'm just saying at some point, if they, you know, if you consider a positive affirmation, that'd be great. Thank you.
As a citizen of Franklin County, I would appreciate that as well.
Okay, well, if anybody ever has any questions, feel free to give us a call. You got the card. Thank you, folks, for giving us the time. Unless you want us for the rest of the agenda, we'll probably sneak out.
Well, you're welcome to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate you coming.
Absolutely. I appreciate that a lot. Thank you.
Did you get my good side on that?
Have a good day, folks. Amanda?
Amanda, you're up.
Terry. She's down.
You made a motion without the full board here last night, but you're unwilling to make a motion until the full board comes.
Some things that I think are more detrimental to the community, I'll do that. I think that's my choice.
I mean, there's only a few.
Okay, thank you. And this is about.
We have the new job description. She has a new full-time employee to recommend.
Clyde has a suggestion, and I concur with him. I agree with him. In the job description, you haven't gone anything about them reporting monthly to the commissioners. And I would appreciate that. And so would Clyde.
So that's not in any of our other job descriptions? So this will be unique to this one?
Well, we'd like to do that. He and I both believe that. I think leadership should be here for at least one meeting a month to explain some things to us.
We can incorporate that in other job descriptions as well, if you like.
I would like that because I like to see.
It's going to take a little bit more, but we can certainly do that.
I agree with Terry that the head of each department should be to a commissioners' meeting. Because sometimes as things said at commissioners' meeting, that reference goes back to their department. And I think they should be here to protect their department. I would, if I was the leader.
So if you want, we can, if you want to make a motion today, we can make a policy that there should be a representative from each department designated by the department head, if not the department head, the department that cannot attend. The chief deputy or one of the.
I think you'll find, I made that quite a while ago.
I recall that.
With the other board, it was on the other board, but.
We'll just do it again.
I'll do it again. I'm going to make a motion that one meeting a month, that the head of each department be at the meeting.
Designated.
Commissioners meeting.
Or designated, you can.
And whatever, if it could be the first meeting of the month or the second. I refer, I like the first meeting because that's where we have a lot of business usually on the first meeting.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion on that motion? Or in favor of that motion?
So if we incorporate that, were there any other changes? The big, we, we really, Amanda and Terry really did a good job revising the job description, I think. There's more emphasis now, in my opinion, on the management aspect and not so much the dispatch.
Did you, did you chat with Scott Nichols about this? No, yes, no. Because I asked him to give his opinion as well on this job description. It looks fine to me, but I'll, I'll read it again tonight.
So you're going to put it into all the job descriptions?
I can at some point, but yes.
Would you incorporate that?
And at some point down the road, we will be doing the annual personnel policy review, and that would be the appropriate time to do that.
Okay. I, I guess I make a motion, we accept this job position, job position description for the communication manager at the dispatch center.
Any discussion? All those in favor of that?
We'll make that addition. That being said, if it's okay, we'll go ahead and start the advertising process for the position. They answered it. We did it up this week.
Have you started interviewing yet for that position?
No, no, we haven't even advertised it.
No.
I don't see anybody on it.
Okay. Anything else?
Full-time?
So I'm back to ask that we accept Henry Nowinski, the one that we just hired at part-time to fill the full-time opening that we have at the dispatch center.
Oh, yeah?
Henry Nowinski, we just hired him about a month ago for part-time.
We should get some easier names.
Do you want to spell that one? He will be filling one of the vacancies because we did have Dane Robinson leave the end of February. So we do, that was an anticipated opening, which is why we hired him. So if you approve, then we will get him full-time.
I make a motion, we hire Henry full-time. I'll second that motion.
What's the last name?
I don't think he's going to.
That'll take care of it.
Nowinski. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
And then I have, I'm asking for permission or approval to implement a scheduling program. It will help with being able to view the scheduling within the dispatch center externally. So somebody, as far as the manager, can actually see who is working. They can arrange the schedule. Right now it's just a hard copy at the office, so any changes have to be written. So there is some errors and it allows the dispatchers to be able to log in remotely and view their schedule and see if there's changes that are made. If it's paid monthly, it's $360 total per year, but if you pay yearly, it's $200. So I would anticipate just doing a yearly paper and see how it works this for one year and see if we move forward with it. But I think it would be a great tool to help with the management of the scheduling. It's used right now by Farmington Police Department, so we've got some inside operations on it. They've had extremely good luck with using it over there for their department. It's called When To, yeah, When To Work.
We want a motion on that?
Yep.
I make a motion, we accept that.
I'll second that. $200 a year. Okay, any further discussion? None, all in favor? So go. See how it works.
And we will be presenting to you sometime, probably the next meeting, a part-time pay scale for the dispatch. There's been some questions about that.
I figured it would be one today.
Well.
I'm still doing some math. I haven't found one that I like yet.
Oh, all right. Good. Take your time.
And just want to, you know, smart on the agenda, last week we had a major issue up at the, no, major issue. An issue up at the dispatch with flooding into the V-line cable that's underground, which resulted in losing the cable for, I don't know if that's been restored.
It's not. It cannot right now until spring. The tubes, so where it floods in the parking lot, all of that water flooded into the underground tube. So the tubes are frozen, so they can't actually get any new lines to run through. So there has been a break in one of the lines somewhere from the road to the building. And they cannot, none of them are open because of the water. So they have to wait until it.
And the concern that Jim was up there that day, and I happened to be up there that day as well, but Jim's concerned too, I was underground. And with that floods, that's something we really should address coming up in the next budget is, at a minimum, try to get that water so it runs off. And we're going to do it via ditching or how we're going to handle it. But Sheriff, the sheriff and I have been talking about it. It's something you're going to see in the budget to try to see if we can, it was really bad the other day. Boy, it's just really damn places.
Where does that, between the two buildings? Is that where?
The whole thing is.
Right where the gas pump, right on the corner, it just floods, but there's nowhere for the water to go.
Oh, okay.
And right there on that corner is where the tank sits underground, with the lines that run through. So the water just seeps in and fills the tubes.
The other thing we talked about too, in addition to taking care of the water drainage issue is potentially looking at expanded parking up there as well because the parking is really tight, especially around the dispatch and the outside.
I thought that when I was up there.
It's tight maneuvering. We've actually had an accident there with one of the cruisers hitting one of the.
There's too many cruisers there.
That well, but it is tight.
Now, where the garden used to be, we could put cruisers out there, you know, out back.
Good, I mean.
Make a back door. I think we got one anyway.
Okay. Anything else?
Anything else, Savannah? You're doing a good job. We appreciate it. With your help with that guy standing beside you, the both of you, doing a good job.
Is that it? Thank you very much. We'll move to the clerk's report.
You made a change, you know? Yes, we need approval for February 11th and February 18th minutes.
I make a motion, we accept the clerk reports on them.
Today, Monday. Okay, I second that. Any discussion? All in favor? So go. Treasurer's report?
Yeah, for the treasurer's report, all we have is, we're, we have a three checking account, banking reconciliations. And I'll keep them up on my desk if you want to look at them. And we had quite a few warrants. We had three cable warrants. We have two county warrants. And we had two for the tube and one for the unorganized territory. And you signed them all and thank you very much for going through them.
I make, I make a motion, we accept treasurer's report. Head reported.
Second that. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Full business UT tax assessment revision.
Hopefully we have it correct, assigned to the satisfaction of the new UT fiscal administrator. We incorporated his recommendations in the actual budget. The only thing that was changed in the budget that you approved was the admin administration line item will now be $66,719. So the total budget expenditures will be the $1,355,519. And if you would make a motion to accept that new expenditure number, that would be appropriate.
$255.
$1,355,519.
$355.
Yeah, $519.
$19. I make a motion, we accept that $1,355,519 for UT.
Second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion?
And further recommendation on the assessment, we made, the surplus will now be $122,590 with an additional $113,327. So the new tax assessment will be a slight reduction. It will be $1,178,763. Got to have a motion on that. And then your signature on that as well.
I make, I make a motion that we set the tax assessment for $1,178,763 for the UT.
Second that motion. Any discussion?
Just a question. The assessments for $1.3 million, the, tell me about the difference.
For what?
I guess I'm not following the conversation.
Well, your, your assessment for $1,355,519 is for administration, summer roads, audit, Kingfield Library, and the 13 vehicles. Okay? And the $1,178,763 is for different ones, miscellaneous revenue.
It's the net assessment.
And that's the assessment.
It's your expenditures minus your revenues is what is assessed in the tax for the UT. You always have revenues to offset your expenditures.
But I would have thought those revenues would have been the same as the expenditure, the assessment the same as the, am I missing something? I guess I am.
I mean, your expenditure, what we use, always the largest number. And then your revenues get subtracted off that and that's your net assessment that gets billed to the taxpayers, to the state, for the unorganized people.
So the first total is just expenditures?
Correct. There's no revenue in that. That's just a total, that's just a total.
And then the revenue's added, then the new assessment is the $1.178.
So why wouldn't, why wouldn't the revenues in the expenses be the same? Is there a surplus going in there someplace?
We get revenues from various places, not just taxpayers. That's, that's those, those are the revenues that are in that.
That's the difference then, between $1.3 and $1.1.
Just like a town, a town gets revenues from other places besides their town.
Thank you for that recommendation.
Taxation. They have accounts. We're making all kinds of money off some funds we have in the bank. Right, is that number correct? You leave, that's the one that you want that motion?
According to the fiscal administrator, that is the correct number.
That's a correct number.
That was what he sent to me to have approved today for his recommendation and statutory requirements.
Could I ask one other question? You did a UT budget pack two months ago. You did a UT budget pack two months ago that included, uh, an extra deputy in that budget. Does this mean that that's been approved by the state or does not?
No, that is, I think actually is being presented this week, the municipal cost component is what they call it, when they combine all the requests from all the unorganized, the counties for the UT.
Okay. All in favor of that motion then? It's a little, the number is clear. You want us to sign that now? I didn't sign that.
You didn't sign it, yeah.
No, I didn't until after we made the motion.
Okay, sure.
That would have been an illegal move. You wouldn't want me to do that.
No, I would not.
Not with all these people here. There.
We both have signed it, just you both, both one.
You want Charlie to? You want to hold that? Did you check out that unit?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I worked right up that same day.
Good, so you're okay with it?
And I, I, uh, I'm okay with the replacement of the H unit in the public right away on the Smith Road and the West Freeman Road. I have checked it out personally, so.
So would you like to make that a motion?
Did we have Jerry Haynes check that out as well? Did Jerry check that out? No, you don't know. Was that Jerry's?
I know.
As long as this doesn't seem to be too close to.
I, I, I personally done it and I make a motion, we grant that.
I'll second that on your recommendation. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion? So go.
Okay, I'll let them know.
Okay.
That's all I had for today.
Okay, miscellaneous, anybody have anything else?
Just a question, clarification. Uh, I read the newspaper, an article written by Donna Perry, reporting on the Jay Selectman's meeting. And they, they had a conversation regards to the amount of money that the county commissioners were withholding from payment. And in it, they mentioned something I was unaware of. Apparently, and I remember this, that the Budget Committee recommended a three percent raise to non-union employees. And I read, Donna, the article, right? The county commissioners have withheld that or not?
They gave raises, but it wasn't three percent.
Julie can answer that question.
So I, I've been in communication with Shiloh and we, I sent her an email yesterday to address that. That is correct, and the Budget Committee did approve a three percent cost of living for non-union employees and elected officials. However, the commissioners opted to do a two percent quota for non-union and a one percent for elected employees. And I made clear to her that by statute, it is the commissioners that have the authority to determine the wages of the employees of those individuals.
That was two to one.
There are various statutes that address that. So again, that's another thing that would take a statute or a change, to take that authority away from the commissioners.
So the Budget Committee does not have the authority to increase the budget as it comes to, as it comes to salaries?
They can increase it and they can do so as a recommendation, but they can't, they can't obligate the commissioners to honoring that, no.
I'm just.
The statutes are really clear. I mean, in order to accomplish any of the changes, you're gonna have to change the statutes.
So I'm just trying to understand maybe the rationale behind this. Well, I, uh, when Pam gave the testimony at the Budget Committee, if I remember right, it was, if union employees get three percent, then non-union employees also ought to have an equivalent raise. And is that correct? Is that kind of my?
That's your rationale?
Well, that, that's the rationale I heard.
You need to, you need to sit here and watch what happens during the entire year. That's not my rationale.
It was a department recommendation, in all cases, that the non-union staff all receive three percent. And we've, as department heads, we've never asked for more than what union employees receive as raises, just to keep some fairness in it. That was the department's recommendations.
Was it unanimous that?
Two to one.
Two to one.
So Terry, what, what's your thinking about? I don't know how much money we're talking, is it millions?
I think you're talking about things that are personal, so I'm not sure that we should be discussing this. But I, I think, I think if you look at the non-union workers, they get more benefits than you're seeing.
Yeah.
And you're not aware of those. So I think it's unfair for you to judge when you don't have all the information.
And that's why I asked the question, because hopefully I can get more information.
Like snow days. Like snow days, Thanksgiving, Christmas. This year, we gave them two extra days at Thanksgiving. I don't know how many snow days we've had so far. Three?
I haven't kept track, anyone else?
Three of them, maybe.
Probably three.
So that's a week, that's another week off, so figure that out for extended while.
And union employees don't get that?
Correct.
Yeah.
They do get holidays, let me.
Yeah, they get the holiday.
They get the holidays. But obviously, those are twenty-four, seven operations we're talking about. There's a big difference between that.
In the non-union.
Yeah, correct.
Quite a difference.
Twenty-four, seven, you can't, you gotta have somebody at those facilities on a snow day. There's just no way you could, I mean, you've got to run. You're required to.
And they're contractual.
Yeah.
And there isn't one.
So that's the big difference between the union and union is the twenty-four.
And even the people that are elected officials, they, they, they're not mandated to be every day. But they do, because they're dedicated. But, so they get a day off.
Yeah.
Well, Susan would like to say something right there.
Yes, I would like to say something.
You still, Susan?
The unions do get benefits, they get health insurance. So you made it sound like, oh, poor them, they don't get anything. And, um, and we left track of what I was gonna say, oh no.
Will you be telling?
Oh, when you, you know, said that we don't have to be here as elected officials. Well, what if we decided to, what if I decided to cut my work week down to three days? You'd have me in here and you'd be cutting my salary. So to make that comment, to make that comment that.
I'm, I'm not sure that, Sue. You can think that, I suppose.
I'm sure of that.
Well.
So I just want to make, clarify that the unions get, they get good benefits, say, in a non-union.
Okay, I, I have maintained, and I will maintain it, that everybody should be used equal. Non-union and union. If, if they have to have a union to fight for their salary and everything, and, and, which they do, then non-union don't. And, and I, and I feel that the non-union and elected officials should be used the same, not discriminate them people. And I feel that they were discriminated this last year. Elected officials? There was a remax made that they knew how much a job was when they took it. How long has George been here? Thirty years?
Fifty.
What, I mean, I might, sorry, fifty, fifty-one years. If you go, if we go back to where you started fifty-one years ago and you'd be working for the same amount that you did fifty-one years ago, that don't even make sense.
No, it doesn't.
And so why, why do we freeze them to one percent?
That motion's kind was made because of, uh, uh, how do I want to say this? You know, they get elected every four years for a position. And that was the reason that came up. That was the reasoning and the logic behind that. When you run for a position, you know exactly what that is before you run.
With what?
And it should be set by the commissioners every four years, those numbers.
I, I don't, I don't agree with that, Terry, at all.
That's okay, that's, that's why we call it a democracy or, yeah, a republic, you know, we're actually a republic.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just like to differ with you because I first ran in two thousand and ten, I ran, I lost. I ran again in two thousand and fourteen and I did win the election. And when I started, I was actually asked by the commissioners and the department head, um, the administration here, how many days a week I wanted to work, and that determined what my salary was gonna be. It wasn't like I saw a salary anywhere, really, as to what my salary was gonna be when I decided to run. So I, I don't agree with you on that point.
That's okay. Sue?
And I, the other thing I want to add, I, you know, I've heard that excuse, you know, we knew what we were gonna get when we ran. Well, any employee that gets hired knows what the salary is, so you tell me what the difference is. And don't give me this hogwash of we're elected, because we put in just as much time as the other one is, so.
But you don't have to.
Well, then I, that's sounding like a red light.
Yeah, right, a green light. Green light, the not worse for all time.
It's just like Pam, the, we know what the previous treasurer has been doing for hours in the last, you know, twelve years. So just take a look at the history of it, so that's all that we did. And that's why we came up with those.
Well, I would think longevity and.
Absolutely.
Myself and, and Sue have been here a long time, and even our deputies have been here a long time. And what happened last year in the budget, by only giving the elected people one percent and the employees two, because of the longevity, our deputies are making pretty much almost what we make. And we're responsible for our departments and making sure the work gets done. And we're here full-time. We don't abuse it and never have abused. Your, your theory that we don't have to be here every day, that has not been the situation in.
But isn't that true?
My office and Susan's.
You're like speaking out of turn, saying that you don't have to be here every day.
Well, it might be true, because for commissioners, because you've got three and all you need is two. And you don't need to have one.
Excuse me, I'm talking to George.
When I was hired back thirty-some odd years ago, the board of commissioners sat right there and they said, we want a, a working register.
Uh-huh.
So I have been working.
And they've always been that way.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not questioning that at all, am I? I haven't questioned that.
And back in two thousand, I believe it's two thousand seventeen, the, the same issue was happening up in the Sheriff's Department when we had the old pay scale, it was before you came on.
Yeah.
And their, their deputy, so the highest paid deputy, was making pretty close to what, I guess they were tenants now, I'm not sure of them, you know? And so the commissioners opted to do, put them up to grade seven on the pay scale, because, so now with us, I'm, I'm kind of anxious to see how this next budget sees.
Well, when we did that survey three years ago, it showed that you two were twenty percent over the average.
They didn't take into longevity, they did.
This, oh, yeah, you didn't let me finish, but that's exactly what I was gonna say to you.
Right.
Yeah, they did, but we didn't do anything about it, we didn't take that away. We saw that, we tried to adjust it, we brought in all those department heads that you mentioned. And we tried to negotiate some sort of a fair salary. And I thought we did that. So, and I, anything else? We're beating a dead horse here, I think.
Well.
We have to decide.
I, I, I don't mean to stir the snake on this, I'm sorry.
But you are.
But I, and I appreciate you being willing to be open and have a conversation about it, because in, in my mind, I always thought the process was commissioners develop a budget and it's their budget. And you give it to a budget committee. And the budget committee gets a public hearing, it gets input from other people, and then changes the budget. Then it goes back to the commissioners for approval or not approval. If they don't approve it, then the, by majority, then it has to go back to the budget committee and they have to vote by two-thirds over the rule of the commissioners. And that's the process.
Has to be a hundred percent.
Look, it has to, correct. And, and so that, to me, that seemed to be a fair process. And when the commissioners came in and just said, we just aren't gonna pay the bill, it kind of upsets the process. And it makes me wonder about where is democracy failing? And if I don't sit here and ask the questions, then I don't have a half an understanding in regards to what you're thinking.
But just read and read the laws and then you'll understand what we did. And that's how it is, man.
Yeah.
And if you don't like it, you go to the legislature and you get it changed. Okay, I'm sorry, but that's the way it is. We checked with the lawyers, it was totally legal, we wouldn't do anything that wasn't legal.
Yeah.
And so you've mentioned this several times and we get.
Well, I, I keep.
You'll get the same answer.
I, I keep discovering new things that aren't paid.
Okay.
And, and.
Let's move on. Anything else? If there isn't anything else, I'll accept that motion for adjournment.
I will say there were a couple of thank you notes from the recent recipients of the TIF.
Oh, good, good.
From some of the people that have some scholarships, so they're right here for you.
Thank you. There was a letter from the Town of Wilton, I, I left it here, but I got it right here. You have one, Charlie has one, I can see it from here.
Yeah.
Could, I'll, I'll just make a copy of those, is that a?
You haven't got one?
Yeah, I did have one, but I thought I'd have to get it.
Here it is.
Uh, is there, on the seventeenth, I know some selectmen from towns are going to come and visit.
Yeah, yeah.
Is, is there, is it gonna be in this space or is there?
Julie?
Yeah, the courtroom will be available if we need.
If we need it, it's gonna be available.
Okay, I would think we need it. We'll just plan a meeting then.
I think we'll probably just.
I don't know why they're all coming.
The meeting's ten o'clock.
Oh, you don't want to change that clock?
No, I don't want to change it to ten, our ten o'clock.
Okay, we'll meet at ten o'clock upstairs in the Superior Court. Okay? I'll read a motion.
With nobody else? I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? We are adjourned at eleven, seven.